So on the, on this side of the building that you can see kind of nestled into the corner between the two buildings and you start to see a little bit of the police administration area on the upper level where some of those darker metal panels are. Building plans haven't changed a lot other than some of the reductions that we had talked about for the cost reduction strategies. So I won't spend a lot of time on it other than to say, you know, the building has changed a little bit to accommodate the precast panels that we agreed upon. So the garage has kind of been tweaked a little bit to align with what our structural engineers need for the spacing on garage doors and that type of stuff. But generally, everything is the same as what we've presented before with fire administration located in this area here. Our police squad area and garage is on the right-hand side with our lobby and our emergency operations or our training room kind of right off of the main entry to the building. Upper level, we have our dorm rooms, sleeping rooms that we had talked about before, our living space for our firefighters, our shared fitness and training space for fire and police, our fire administration area, and again, that small patio area that can be used by both of the police department and the fire department. And then our mezzanine training space for the fire department is that two-story space in between the two apparatus space. But we talked quite a bit at the last meeting about some of the development of the interior architecture for the building and some of the materials that you see out here kind of reflect the direction that we're looking for in the building or at least what our recommendations are. And so as you come in the main lobby, one of the design ideas that we've had in our conversations with both departments is durability and also welcoming into the facility. So while we have a hard finish on the floor, probably something along the lines of a polished concrete, we do want to have some softer materials on the walls and the ceilings to kind of bring down some of the reverberations in that space. And so we are showing an acoustical wood ceiling in that space. I know that there was a question raised as to the accessibility of it. We have some samples here. It's kind of a plug-and-play, click-and-play type of system where there's some retention clips that are easily taken out that you can take out panels to be able to access spaces above the ceiling. It not only gives us a warmer look in that area, but it also helps us with noise mitigation in that space. We are showing some perforated metal panels along the perimeter, not only for a design aesthetic, for bringing some metal into the building, but it also with perforations in it will also take some of the sound down in that space. We do think this is an opportunity for some branding in that lobby. So as the public comes in, what do we want that space to be? We've got a couple of logos shown in some glass features that bring daylighting into those upper administration spaces. But again, it goes to what do we want the building to feel like as people come in? What do we want the first impression to be related to kind of celebrating kind of our public safety folks? We've just shown some generic lettering in there, but we could certainly get some feedback from the departments and from leadership as to what we want to include in that area. So from this area, you can see this is our main reception desk, but then it also leads into the training space off to the right, which is our next image that you have in here. So again, we have, we're looking at this space as a multifunctional space with flexible training tables and chairs in there. There's a couple of storage rooms that flank the presentation wall for storage of extra chairs and tables in that space. We have a small counter kitchenette in there for coffee or, you know, donuts or whatever you might need to support a training opportunity in there. But again, we're trying to keep this space as open and as flexible as possible. We do have some acoustical material on the ceiling. Given that this is an extension of the public lobby space, we've incorporated some of those same design elements into this area. But we really want to focus those elements just in those areas that are common to the public area of the building. So you'll see as we go through where we have some commonality in the design language, we're changing it to be a little bit more simple as we continue through the building. And a good example of that is this is the upper level living area for the fire department. We have, again, some of those similar design elements in the ceiling, but we've taken out some of the wood elements in there and just stayed with some more standardized materials in there. We are going to use a harder material on the floor, just again, for durability. It probably won't be exposed polished concrete because on a second floor, you get a lot of cracking in the concrete. And so it'll probably be a resilient, cleanable floor up in that area to kind of take on some of the 24/7 operations at the building experiences. Another image is where we transition over to the police department. So we do have some change in materials, just to kind of give some brand identity to each of the departments. And so this is the break room for the police department upstairs. And so we're going to introduce some blue grays into the palette, but the flooring and some of those materials will stay the same as we go through the building. This is an image of the fire administration area. We are introducing, again, some colors that are representative of the departments. There'll be some, you know, highlighted red colors in those area, whether it's in the furniture or accent colors on the wall. But again, a modest approach to that to try to give us a backdrop in some of those common areas in there. And then again, similarly, as you move into the police department, you'll see that that changes to the kind of that traditional blue, but kind of a warmer blue. In that area, we are putting some highly durable carpet, and you can see it out here. It's not your traditional carpet like what you have in here. This stuff is designed to take a high level of abuse. It can be scrubbed, it can be cleaned. And so again, and its price point is very similar to just a regular carpet, but it, we put it in locker rooms and stuff like that, just to kind of cut down on the noise. And we thought that this open office area where our patrol folks will be hanging out would be a good location for carpet. But you can see off into the distance, we have that polished concrete floor where the main circulation areas of the building are. And so with that, I'm going to pause just for a second and answer any questions that the council might have on the presentation. I know that Pat had handed out a budget presentation to go through, which you may have some questions on if you can read it, but I'd like to get any feedback on the design that you see here or any concerns that we might have on the materials because that'll also influence, you know, our presentation coming up for our public meeting.
Okay. Thank you, John. I'll just, I'll have one, I just asked, I just have two quick questions. First, in the lobby area where it's going to be located, where the public comes in, is that emergency lockdown area for people in need or seeking shelter? That's still accessing into the lobby or it's lockable where they can then, you know, have a safe space to notify for assistance, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
And so will that then, John, will that same room be utilized for the police officer when they do a soft interview or when they meet and greet people at the, at the level instead of bringing them through upstairs or into the locker or into the interview rooms? That they'll be able to take, you know, information from the public? Is that the same room or is there, are there two separate entities there as you come into the lobby area?
There are two, two separate entities. So the, the design intent for the one-off lobby is to address the 24/7 aspect of if somebody comes to the police station at 3:00 in the morning, is either in a domestic situation that they need to be in a safe spot, they can come to this location and wait for an officer in that location. But during normal business hours, there are multiple conference rooms off the lobby. There's one off of the training room. And then there are a couple of additional interview rooms. You can see one here next to the bathrooms and then another one a little bit further in right here. So there are a couple of soft interview rooms that are like for the, like the normal daytime if you're coming into the building to meet with somebody. But there is that quote unquote "safe" room that we had talked about early on in the design process.
Thank you, John. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Just a question about the carpeting. Will the floor underneath be utilizable without the carpeting?
Can you reiterate?
So, so in five years, when we determine the carpet's absolutely worthless because of the traffic, and that's just based on the hard floor that's downstairs now that's beat up, can we take the carpet out and just use the concrete?
Um, yes, you can. It's, it's a glue applied product. It's a, it's, what our plan is, is to use, to be more clear, carpet squares. And so there are areas that get worn out sooner than other areas. There is also the opportunity of just replacing individual carpet pieces as you go as well, if you want to do that.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Mr. McNamara. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is also about flooring.
Sure.
And in terms of the utilization, John, when the general public is actually accessing that front door access point, this is something I don't know. Is the general public going to be paying like parking tickets there and that sort of, that's how that will be utilized at that window? So just a little feedback that I've received at the, at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center is that polished concrete, even though there's rugs, you know, as you walk in, there's double doors, if people still have, you know, some snow on their boots, it is slippery. Is there a different type of surface that you could place on a polished concrete floor?
Uh, yes. To answer your question, there are multiple finishes that you can spec out for polished concrete that, you know, deal with, you know, slip resistant.
It absorbs some of that slipperiness.
Yeah, it absorbs some of that stuff. I would imagine we're going to still end up with walk-off mats in there regardless. If it's a big concern, there are other products like we could look at, you know, tile in that area that would have a larger, you know, slip coefficient on it. But there are some things that we can do, and I don't know if Pat wants to add to that, but there are some ways that we can increase the ability for the floor to either absorb moisture or have more traction on it.
Okay. Thank you for that answer, that we can still have a conversation if we need to.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, we are now replacing some of our carpet squares. The product just didn't maybe stick down properly. Is this similar product or similar brand that's in the Iron Trail Motors Event Center or is it a different or more upgraded brand? And could you tell me if you know the differentiation on that?
In answer to what's in the iron trails, what I can tell you about this product is is that it is specifically designed for wet environments and that it isn't, it isn't a traditional carpet product. It is very specifically made for wet environments.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Bearbow.
Yeah, John, is this design now, so if we need to add more bays and stuff to this as per, say, our fire department expands and we need another ambulance with the way things are going up here? If you've heard, there's such a shortage of personnel, you know, the range of worry that we may have to end up going wet and large over time. Is there a way to expand and move out and put more garage space?
Uh, yes, there is, council member. One of the things that we've been making sure is, is that we have offset off of Eighth to be able to add another apparatus bay on the north side. And then the command garage is also designed to get larger if we need to, as well as the garage for our patrol vehicles as well. So we've had a number of conversations with both chiefs about that.
Thank you. That's what I needed to know to make sure we haven't taken our space and not make it accessible for future. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Counselor Bearbow. Any other questions, comments for Mr. McNamara at this point in time before we bring up Mr. Wertz from Crowe-Sandersen? Anything else, Mr. McNamara?
Well, one of the things that we will want at the end of this, if we can, is get some direction from council on the public hearing so that we can get that, work with RIT to get that set. And then if we, if there is more detail that council would like, you know, at a future meeting, we can certainly come back for a work session if we need to.
Thank you. We're still working in the legislative aspect of that, but we hope to have that resolved soon. So thank you. We'll address that issue at the end of the presentation. Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Mr. Wertz, welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Long trip from Bemidji, Minnesota.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Left at nine, got lost. I'm just kidding.
Okay.
Oh, I'm good. I kind of gave you an updated budget sheet. I handed out to everyone, kind of reflecting back in, well, the original estimate kind of back in November, updated some tweaks, you know, we went and then presented back in January. So after the, called the 50% CD set, we did another budget check to go through, see where we're at, because obviously the market is, anybody reads the paper is kind of crazy right now with inflation escalations. So right now, the way the building's designed to go through a budget check, we're sitting fine. I guess we're not over it, you know, to go through. We, you know, lucky we carried some escalations, built them before, but we did reduce those down. And kind of, I don't expect a decision today. I'll probably have to come back and committee the whole meeting to go through because there's a lot of information to intake of some of the risks to go forward. You know, I know with the land acquisitions of the house, the house is not going maybe as quickly as we'd like, kind of, I wouldn't bid this overall project out, knew where it's, excuse me, knew where we're sitting at. So part of my thought is, is there's a couple of different options you could do is you could wait and bid it out for a spring '23 start, but that would have a lot of issues in my opinion with the cost escalations to go through. So one thing I kind of recommend is once we get the full drawings and so多人 reports done, we'll probably have a complete package around end of June, first week of July or in that ballpark. We'd bid the entire project out probably towards end of July, first week of August after public advertisements, bid it out, and then the work and award contracts and assuming the budget comes in, but you never want to assume, comes in favorable, you know, we award all the contracts. And 2022, we would do removal of the houses and get the site prepped and then procure our long lead time items and then really break the ground in spring of '23. And that's when we do footings, foundations. Because right now, precast, if we were to order precast today, we'd be getting it in end of January of '23, which that's not happening. So if you fast forward to June, July, we're not getting it until probably May or June. Same thing with steel and those long lead time components. You know, and that gives the design team and everybody good opportunities to go through those shops and some middles, get everything procured, and then hopefully avoid a big escalation on the material. Our Duluth office is doing the schools. When they build that high school, they end up bidding it out a year ahead of time and they're going to be storing all the material on site. That's an option you can do too, you know, because the site essentially should have the houses gone, we'll secure with fencing, and then in Conex boxes, we would store insulation or steel studs or whatever it may be. So I think that's kind of a recommendation of, I don't really know what the market's going to do. I'm not going to sit here and lie and tell you I know it's going to get favorable, but that's kind of our thought is to try to protect ourselves from major escalations and increases to protect the budget. And I'm not saying that we bid it out end of July, we're all going to be whistling Dixie. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that, but it's probably better than wait until January '23, so.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Questions from the council? Counselor Bearbow?
Yeah, Pat, now when we do the steel beams and stuff in there, are they going to be coming from the U.S. or are they going to be Chinese crap?
Uh, yeah.
And also, and also from Brazil?
Uh, U.S.
I don't want to see any of that. I want it all coming from U.S. manufacturers.
If we could write in specifications to make sure it's U.S.-bought only, just to make sure.
Okay. All right. Okay. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Bearbow. Anybody else? We did give that budget and you're trying to stick to that budget, and the recommendation's coming forward to the council, I think, you know, to try to get those things as much we can bid it out early if we get, if it comes favorable as your recommendation is, then start purchasing those building materials, ordering the materials, locking that price, and is that come in storm until you're ready to build? Is that kind of where we're looking at?
Yeah, basically in a nutshell. And then, you know, get, get all the hoses tore down too and get the site ready to go through so in the spring of '23, the site is clear and we can just kind of hit the ground running.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Pat, is there anything that we can do as a city to help facilitate the, I guess, the process of the acquisition and, and I guess it would be demolition? So our, I know John had given us an update and we were a little bit, kind of falling a little bit back, but is there anything else that we could be doing to assist with that or?
Not to my knowledge. Just going to go knock on the doors, the people that haven't agreed yet, but I don't think you're going to do that. No, I don't. I don't think so.
And have, have we given them an, an actual hard, hard stop date, John?
Mr. Sullivan?
Um, we, we've notified them by, by mail and our relocation expert, acquisition expert is working with all of the properties and they are aware that there is a, July 1 is the, the date that we're supposed to have all the properties entitled. The issue is, is even if we have them all entitled, we can't knock homes down that we can't relocate people to. So that's kind of an, kind of an ongoing issue. We don't have a lot of inventory yet that's come available for us to put people into different houses. We can't remove a person out of the house if we have nowhere to put them.
Relocation has been one of the challenges.
That's been holding us up and the available inventory to relocate people has been less than favorable. One of the other challenges has been some of the homes that we're acquiring in the appraisal price versus when you go out in the marketplace, the homes are much more expensive than what they currently have at that location.
And so there, is there anything legally that the city needs to be working in tandem with moving forward to, I know the July 1, but if you can't relocate, but is there anything else legally that we need to authorize to be done?
Brian?
If I could.
City Attorney.
Counselor, the council's already done it. We've given authorization for the eminent domain process to move forward and specifically with what's known as a quick take, which we've given some notice and can guarantee some dates, so.
So we are working also in tandem with that and we've issued some quick dates to, so far.
Correct. Essentially, the way that it works is, well, the relocation specialists and Mr. Sullivan are working to negotiate with folks. We've kind of set a hard date and said, the city intends to take possession of these properties on or before July 1.
Okay. Thank you. Then the longer we wait to get the bids, I mean, the higher chance we have of a cost increase or inflation or?
Potentially, yes.
Potential. Okay. Thank you, and thank you, John, and thank you, Brian.
But thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. Sherry, where are we sitting at with actual in-hand funding?
Um, we do have a no grant anticipated note from Park State Bank for 9.5 million, and we have four draws. The first draw was April 1 for 2.5 million. We're just, after this bill run, we'll be a little over 2 million, so.
But we don't have, we don't have in hand the construction part. We're still working on that on various levels. And so we can't do any bids until we know we're getting money, is that?
We can't award bids until we know we have the money.
So we could go out for bids tomorrow, and if we don't get the money till November, it doesn't matter because, and by November, it would all be invalid anyway. So we're really just stuck until we have, like, there's really nothing else we as a city can do or especially as counselors, except be patient and wait for all the other moving parts to fall into place. So, so it's frustrating, but, you know, it is, it's where we're at. So I appreciate the work that we're doing. And of course, I didn't write down my other question, so if it comes back to me, Mayor, I will put my light on.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Well, I, you know, I think we have two challenges here to overcome. One is the property acquisition, get those in place, move them as quickly as we can, get those accomplished, get, get that, all those properties in hand. So I know, John, you're working diligently and our contract services people are doing the same thing. And the other is, you know, to acquire the loan from the USDA. Now, you know, we're at the legislative level, trying to get approval from the legislature to give us the authority to negate that loan from our, going against our, our bond rating or bond debt. And so we, we, it is, we've gone through committee at the House of Representatives, at the legislature. It looks like it's moving forward. It looks favorable. We're waiting for a vote that'll come by the end of the legislative session in May. In addition, there's a second component of that, and that's the Senate side, which testimony has yet to be given, that, that has not been scheduled. It will be scheduled soon before the end of the legislative session. So once we get that approval, then we have to go to the bank and get that money from the USDA for the loan. So as we do that, that's part of the process as well. So my question is, in deference to Mr. McNamara's indicated, that we want to take a look at maybe setting a public hearing regarding the USDA, and we're not going to be able to do that until we know that, that we get that passed at the legislative level and then, and then get the approval for the bond. Is that correct or is that not correct?
We can have the hearing now.
We can have the hearing now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then the goal objective here, if there are, I think Counselor Bearbow might have another question, but we would want to set a hearing date for the USDA loan as soon as we possibly can, as soon as you're able to put together the documents to provide the public the information that's needed for this public hearing. So Counselor Bearbow?
Yeah, we've done similar things with street public hearings. We've put them way ahead of the time we're going to be doing the street projects with the public hearings. We had one done almost a year, I think, before we did this last set of street projects. We had the public hearings. My other question is for John and for our city attorney. Do we have these procurements done in block sections or are they scattered all over the rest of the town? Because we could start tearing down once we have procurement of that stuff, as long as we have some money in place. And are we going to contract this out or are we going to use some of our own crews to tear down these homes?
Well, we're going to bid that out, Mr. Wertz.
Okay.
I was just going to say one thing, you know, to go through is, you know, obviously bid everything out just to get materials locked in to keep prices down, you know, but obviously if things don't work out with getting the USDA secured, we can't always just bid out the demo of the houses, get the site cleared, and then whenever it works out to bid it out. We don't have to do everything at once.
Okay.
You know, it's favorable, so like, we can, there's a few steps that, there's a hazardous survey that has to be done at each house as well. There's going to be some abate that needs to take places. The MPCA is still finishing their study on the south end where there's some contaminated soils. So there's a few steps in there to really, to get done as well. So a little bit of red tape left. But, I don't know if that answers your question, like, so we can bid that out to get all the stuff done at once. It'd probably be best to do everything one time on the houses versus piecemeal it, and then they accept that other components can fall in later, whenever it works best for the city of Virginia.
Yeah, I got a quite, one more question for you, and maybe Brett can answer this too. With that being un-grade with concrete and stuff and parking lot, all asphalt, we only have to dig out deep, do we, if we're going to cover that with either blacktop or concrete for contaminants? I don't think you need to, do you?
Well, whatever, whatever the MPCA is going to require, I don't know what else down there, but they'll make you probably abate it and get it out and get it offsite. So if it's down 15 feet, maybe not, I'm not sure, you know, if it's within five feet or whatever it is, they're going to make you remove it offsite.
But you didn't have to do that if you're covering it with impermeable materials, unless, unless it's really contaminated.
The far south end, though, that would be more green space of the exact location where it's at. So that's not actually, I think, not that close to the building, so knowing what you're going to put down in the future, they probably would make you take it out.
Okay. Is that correct, Brett?
Depends on what it is. I mean, like, the old, the old gasification plant.
If it's just petrol, it is farm it, I know that, but.
Mm-hmm. But there's a lot of, a lot of different uses over the last 100 years in that area that we have to address.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that answer.
A very block and weight answer. It's not a very block and weight area.
So what do we need? I'll go back to Counselor Johnson. What do we need? What timeframe do we need in order to be able to put together the materials necessary to hold the public meeting? And how soon do we, do we need to hold it? Within the next month, within the next few weeks? John, could you give us a little update, and then we'll go back to Counselor Johnson?
Mayor and council, we have what we need for the public hearing. There's not a particular set of materials other than probably what we presented to council today. So the intent would be to just, it has to be published in the newspaper that there's going to be a public hearing 10 days in advance of when the public hearing is going to be. Our intent would be to do it here in the council chambers. We would set it up for a particular time. We would probably do a presentation and then allow people to ask questions and just generally get information on the project. And so that's, we will probably likely have a meeting with our USDA rep between now and then and can confirm that that's what it's all about, but it really is just an opportunity to inform the public as to what's going on in this area, so.
Okay, very good. So we'll be looking at that coming up and we'll be taking a look at our schedules here to schedule something. That's a meeting, whether we have it here or at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, wherever that is, we'll certainly set that before the end of this presentation. Counselor Johnson.
And that's what I forgot. I was going to make a motion to set the public hearing for a half hour before the last city council meeting in April.
Okay, would, the motion, once again, please, Counselor Johnson.
To set the public hearing for a half hour prior to the final April city council meeting, so at 5 o'clock or 5:01, if that is doable, since we're all going to be here.
So we can do that, and thank you, there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Johnson. Did you get that motion, Pam? Is there support for that motion?
It would, the only follow-up question I would ask is how long it would take to get it published, because it has to be 10 days from the publication, so it would have to align with when it can be...
We're looking for 30, or two weeks from, I mean, our next council meeting is going to be April the 26th, so that would give us time to publish it?
If it does, yes, I don't...
The latest it would, could be in the paper would be the 14th, but, or the 15th, but I would need it, like, right away, because they have cutoffs, too, so...
Yeah, so there is a motion on the floor by Counselor Johnson. It's to set it, if that timeline, it's going to be pretty tight moving that forward, but that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion by Counselor Johnson? Second by Counselor Barnzelli, is there any further discussion? I'll reserve my comments for, you know, I just want to make sure that we can do it in that period of time and get, and make sure it gets done right, because I, and I don't know if a half hour is going to be enough. You know, I, I think maybe there could be a lot of questions from the public, and so this public hearing may, like it, like the public hearing in town when we had the Iron Trail Motors Events Center, public hearing that lasted quite a while. So for a half hour, I don't know if there's going to be enough time, maybe there is. Counselor Bearbo.
The meeting you're going to be missing through the 26th or not?
No, the 18th, which is the committee of the whole meeting, I won't be here, but I'll be here.
The 19th, then you won't be here?
That is correct.
Okay, so I run that one in along with Brett?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm thinking the mayor's right, because when we have a, the street public hearings, we have, I think we had more than one, one night on those, if I remember right, and we had quite a few people. I'm not sure if that gives us enough time to do that, unless it's earlier, but then that leaves people out that are working and may want to be here. I'm thinking we could do a separate meeting, Steve, on the 3rd, you know, after, in the evening on the 3rd, which is our regular committee of the whole, we'd have two meetings that day, but I don't think with the number of public hearings I've been involved with on street projects and, and Steve, and Mayor's right with it, it make public hearing, that was long.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, that's up to the council. I don't really care myself, but, because I'll be available.
Well, there is a motion to second on the floor to set it for, for 5:01 on, on April the 26th is the next city council meeting. So that's the motion for now, we is, we're now in further discussion. Counselor Paulson, and then over to Counselor, Beyondich, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. In your experience, John and Pat, have these public hearings normally taken what type of length of time, or does it really depend on the project?
Number, Paulson, it does a little bit depend on the project. I would, we could do it in a half hour. It probably wouldn't leave a lot of time for any comment, would, you know, it took me a half hour just to get through the presentation today, and I would want to give it at least that amount of time. But again, we're here at your direction. We're happy to do what is needed.
We could always, Mayor, put that down on the agenda and put a time that the council meeting will follow that public hearing, because we don't have a specific time for the council meeting that night. We've done that before.
Right, we can always reset the council meeting or make an adjustment in the public notice that, you know, it'll, you know, the, the city council meeting will immediately follow the, the public hearing, however, however long that takes. And that's, that's, that's a possibility to do that, but right now, the motion on the floor is to hold it on the 26th, starting at 5:01 PM. So we can, we can make the adjustment to council meeting, as you suggested, as we move forward, but right now, we're in the discussion phase of that motion in a second. Counselor Beyondich.
And, and I think that was going to be my question also, is if you are going to do a presentation to the public, that probably would eat up a good portion of that time.
Yes, I would say, if you're looking for feedback, I would say a half hour presentation, only the half hour for comment and answering of questions. I would recommend an hour for the public hearing, if that's appropriate, but discussion purposes.
And just one other comment from my, from my perspective is that, you know, that's fine, and we can hold it, but for me, for the general public to be able to get here at 5 o'clock for this, for a public hearing, you know, I know we've had some discussion about, you know, we want to give people who get off work at 5 o'clock and the opportunity to come to a meeting, you know, that's why we moved it, well, we moved the council meeting back from 6:30 to 5:30, or 6 o'clock to 5:30, and that gives our staff, you know, we accommodate our staff at the same time, I think, to try to accommodate our, our citizens to come. I know we've had, you know, tooth and tax hearings, hearings, and the schedule at 6:01 or 5:01 or whatever it is, and there are really very few people that come to those meetings. And, but I think this particular meeting, there would, I think people will want to have some input there, so, but the motion is on the floor to set it at 5:01 on the 26th, and then we can, we can, if we want to add to that motion, Counselor Johnson, if you're willing to do that, and part of that motion is that we're, for the city council meeting to follow, you know, immediately following the end of the hearing, or, or we don't do any separate motion for that, Pam. That can be part of the motion, so we'll hold that, because we have some more discussion. Counselor Paulson.
One quick follow-up question, thank you, Mayor. How many public hearings are normally utilized for a facility such as this? I know with the Antrim Motors Events Center, I think we did a, a couple, if I recall correctly.
We had, we had presentations, but not hearings.
Okay, so...
We had present, pub presentations, so if we're setting a hearing, we haven't had a public presentation on it yet, so we're going to have a hearing before a presentation.
I guess my point is, is there going to be more than one time that the public will get to hear this information and be able to weigh in and give input?
I suppose one could see what level of interest there is at the public hearing. This is a specific checkbox for USDA that it needs to occur this specific way, and if it seems like there's more questions that people need answers to at that public hearing, then I would suggest, yes, we do a public open house, which is more informal type of thing. And if there's great support at the public hearing and there isn't a lot of questions, then we could defer back to council as to whether or not we need to do a public open house.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and I like that train of thought to allow the public to get immersed in this and, you know, maybe more of an open house style to learn and educate the public would be warranted, but this is a checkbox for the USDA that we, we definitely have to fulfill this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Bearbo.
Mayor, when we put together the public hearings on the street projects and stuff for those big street projects we've had, I don't think we had more than 25 people there max, and that was a lot broader area of Virginia than this is going to be, because I don't think you're going to get a ton of city people around the city, but just in the area that this is going to be built. That's my personal opinion.
Well, you know, I, I know that we don't know how many people are going to come, so the motion on the floor is to set the public hearing 5:01 PM on Tuesday, the 26th of April, to hold that public hearing. And then for, I would ask that Counselor Johnson, the maker of the motion, could you, would you include that, that the language that this council meeting would immediately follow that public hearing?
Oh, your, your honor, because I don't want to be here till 9 o'clock that night, so I'll leave my motion to stand, and someone else can offer a different motion.
Okay, okay, motion on the floor, is there support? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Paulson?
No.
Beyondich?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Aaron Selly?
Yes.
Huffy?
No.
Bearbo?
Motion fails. I'm sorry, Counselor Freely, I'm sorry.
No.
I apologize. Motion fails. Okay, thank you. So we still have to set a public hearing. We should do that.
I would make a motion that we go ahead with the meeting to start at 5:01, and the city council meeting would then commence following that.
A motion by Counselor Freely, Pam?
Can I please say something?
No, I'm just teasing, go ahead. What do you need?
It would be preferable, because we're probably not going to get this notice in the paper on time. So it's preferable if you changed it to the first meeting in May, if that works for you.
Yeah, I, I concur.
As the hometown focus is once a week, so if we're going to put it in there, we're not going to meet that deadline.
You have to know this.
Have to have 10 days notice.
So you want me to say the date that we'll be doing this, then, in addition to the timeframe? Okay, so let's, May 1st, you said?
10.
10th.
The first, the first council meeting in May.
That's earliest and quickest we can do this.
Well, we can set a special meeting if you'd prefer that, but we need to have at least 10 days after, I mean, we'd have to get it in paper tomorrow, get it to the paper tomorrow for publication on the 16th, because they have cutoffs.
Set it up for the 10th.
They got Thursday cutoffs, don't they, Pam?
No, it's...
Okay, okay, as we're discussing this, is, is May 10th, is that too far out?
Uh, Mayor and Council, no, it can be any time. Like I said, this is just something that is required by USDA. There's a number of other steps with the USDA that is ongoing, so...
And I prefer not to rush it, too, so I'll get it done, do it right.
I would go ahead and suggest, make a motion to do it on the 10th, commencing at 5:01, and the city council meeting would then begin following that meeting. And I don't anticipate it going till 9 o'clock in the day, but, and if it does, we're here to serve the public.
Okay, so the motion on the floor by Counselor Freely, did you get that motion, Pam, to hold the meeting on May 10th, the, the public hearing at 5:01 PM with the city council meeting immediately following the end of that public hearing? Is there support for that?
I'll support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Roll call, please, Pam.
Beyondich?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Aaron Selly?
Aye.
Bearbo?
Aye.
Freely?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 2. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Mr., Mr. McNamara?
I think I've occupied enough of your time for the evening, and I know you have a long agenda, so, again, we, if it's okay, Brett, if we leave this material here, we will collect it at the public hearing on the 10th. So certainly, in the meantime, if people have opinions on it, we're here to help out, so let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McNamara. Mr. Wertz?
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes, please, Counselor Paulson.
Not to prolong this, but we just, we touched base on something, and then we went into setting the hearing, and I just had a quick question with, is it the MPCA that's working on the, is MPCA that's working on the soil contaminants on that, in that section? So part of the process in terms of, you know, whatever we have to do to mitigate this, that's not included in the overall budget at this point, is that correct? Okay.
Well, not exactly that component, no. I mean, there are site cleanups that are to go through, so whatever that involves may or may not be covered, if it's...
It may or may not be a factor?
Well, if it's a huge area, no. If it's minor, then probably the $925,000, we're done with the houses and that cleanup.
Then we should have it enough, kind of budgeted in there for remediation.
Well, neat, once we get the report for MCPA, we can give you a better understanding as far as the cleanup. There are also potentially other funds.
And that's, I guess, where I was going, if it needed to be designated a brown field, or brown field.
That's what we're waiting for MCP, MPCA on.
Okay, and then what, so I'm just trying to understand our time process, our timeline, because that also, that process takes a while to have it declared a brown field, brown, brown field location, so, sorry, get tongue tied.
No, that's...
So I'm just trying to understand where we're at. We need the MPCA report, so then you can let us know, and then if there's any action step to be taken on behalf of those findings, and we, in fact, can take those action steps.
And we have, as a council member, we have factored that into kind of the conversation as Pat kind of alluded to, it's outside of the current construction zone for the building, and so there is, you know, even if there was a large cleanup necessary that would engage a brown field action, we could still bid out cleanup for the areas that are unaffected by that.
Okay.
Have to, once we have that report, we can give the council a presentation on where exactly it's at.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Okay, thank you, Mr. McNamara, once again, Mr. Wertz, thank you. Have a safe trip back, if you're going back right away. Hey, thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is item 7, unfinished business, item 7.1, the property located at 410 Fifth Street South. We have any updates with respect to that? I see that Mr. and Mrs. Kingsley, Kingsley is in the audience today, as they are diligently awaiting some progress on this, as we all are, too. So do we have any other information that can be disseminated? First, I would ask, Brian, do we have anything that we could give an update for?
Mayor, there's no real update. We took the action at the, at the special meeting to approve the, the resolution and the order, and now we, we'll get the, get the property owner served, and we'll, we'll be in that, in that time period, basically, kind of the waiting time, for lack of a better phrase.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Beyondich.
Going back to what you just said on that timeframe, so has everything been, once we approved that resolution, was everything followed through, and when was that 120 days going into effect? 120 days?
Yep, I did, I did make the, the corrections. It took a little bit longer than anticipated to get the corrections made. I've got the, the signed resolutions in the service, or the 120 days should start tomorrow when they're served.
When were they signed? I mean, when was everything done?
I, I got the last of the changes over this afternoon.
And they have to be served to the property owner?
Okay. Mr. Kingsley, could I just ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
What is the date, the first time that you came to us with, and brought this all back to our attention? How long has it been?
So the latest round that we're going through...
The latest round of the 14 years.
I sent a letter to you folks on January 6th, to the mayor and to all the counselors, expressing my displeasure with what was happening. We attended the first meeting on January 11th and addressed the issue for the first time, and then on January 25th, it was added in to the agenda permanently as unfinished business. So technically, this started this time, January 6th. As you know the history of it, we've been going through this for 14 years now.
Did you request to get correspondence along this way, and have you received that?
We received one piece of correspondence, I believe it was the initial letter to Mr. Toman requesting that they inspect the property. We have received nothing since, other than I, two meetings in a row now, I've received a packet five minutes before the meeting, so I really didn't have a chance to thoroughly view it, which I guess leads to the question is, this is the third meeting in a row now where we've discussed something in the prior meeting, and then it's gone the full two weeks and acted on only the day of this meeting, which effectively, over the last three meetings, has stretched this out another six weeks, another month and a half, so you take that 120 days and add another month and a half to it, and my concern is that we're going to keep adding to that. And, so yeah, thank you for asking that, but we've been dealing this round since January 6th.
And I know we keep saying that we are going to get this taken care of, and it is a slow process, but I feel that we just keep kicking this can down the road every two weeks, and we come back here, and now we just, I just learned that the letter is going to be served tomorrow morning?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that will firmly be the 120-day starting point.
That's correct, yes.
And I hope you're keeping notes on this.
Oh, believe me.
Thank you.
It's 14 years.
Yes, and that's, I think that's why, what the frustration is, is we've been dealing with this, and I wanted to ask, when he first came to us with this, when I got, when I Yes, and that's, I think that's why, what the frustration is, is we've been dealing with this, and, and I wanted to ask when he first came to us with this, um, when I got, when I was elected and put on the council, I know you had come forward, and I thought the issue was taken care of. You came forward, I thought it was taken care of. This is the third time, so we're.
Just since you, just since you've been here.
Since I've been, and I'm kind of sinking my teeth into this one.
Yeah.
Um, and we're going to hold to these timelines, and when something is given as a directive at a meeting, we need to follow up and make sure that it's done, and not wait two weeks every time before we get correspondence or find out how things are going. So I appreciate you coming back. Um, I will stay with this and keep checking on it. Thank you.
Mr. Kingsley, would you like to continue?
Sorry, I'm just looking through my notes here. Like I say, I got handed everything at the last, um.
While you're looking at that, uh,
Yeah.
the issue for us is that, uh, you know, I think we're doing what we have to do right now. We're moving forward with this process. We didn't before. 14 years ago, the elected body didn't do, do it. For whatever reason, we had representation, we, you know, we had all kinds of staff working on it, doing this and that, and nothing ever got accomplished. But I think with the advent of, uh, this new process moving forward, it had to start all over again. So to say, you know, well, we didn't do anything in two weeks, not true. We put together all this, these documents and information, it takes time to do that. We are gravitating toward that process. The, the letter will be served tomorrow. The 120 days starts then, so the, the, the owner of this property is going to have to, uh, you know, meet, uh, the, uh, the, uh, directives of, of the, of the city and the legal process moving forward. If it doesn't, there are consequences moving forward, and those will continue to, to, uh, envelop as the process is under the, under the legal part of the law, we're required to do this. We should have been done 10 years ago, yes, but it wasn't. It is being done now, so please, you know, we'll, we're going to get there.
I do appreciate your efforts, it's just, you know.
We are going to get there.
Process for me. Um, I found the question I was going to ask is,
Sure.
at the under, at the end of the, uh, 120 days, how is it determined whether the, um, property meets specifications? Is there another inspection that's conducted, and if so, who conducts that inspection?
Uh, Brian?
Here for me. Uh, Mr. Kingsley, yes. Uh, essentially what happens is, uh, it, the onus is on the homeowner, the property owner, to come to us and tell us we've accomplished what, uh, what we believe to be the directive. At that point, the city can then send its inspectors back out to go through and verify that all of the work has been completed. If we're not notified during the 120 days, uh, it would be incumbent upon the city at the close of the 120 days to send out an inspector to verify whether any progress has been made, if it's been, uh, brought into compliance with the terms of the order. And if not, uh, then that, uh, becomes a court action.
And the, um, the condition is based on city code, I would assume at that point, not just the items that are listed on the sheet, but that it is determined inhabitable for someone?
It would need to be brought into compliance, uh, with the, with the terms of this order, which incorporate and include the city code.
Which is, oh, which is the, uh, 2017 property maintenance preservation code.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsley. Uh, Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. Just to be specific, because I appreciate where you've been for 14 years. Are we talking actual business days, or are we talking regular days, or? I, I, I want to be specific because, because again, it's, it's one of those things that comes up and, and now, you know, because the difference is September or August. That's the difference between business days and actual days.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Lindsay?
Uh, Counsel Johnson, these are, are normal days, not, not business days.
Calendar days, thank you.
Calendar days.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, um, Brian, thank you, Counsel Johnson. Uh, Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going back and I'm, I'm looking through, uh, some of our minutes, and, um, so it appears that we had a meeting, yes, on March 22nd, and then it was, um, motion by Johnson, supported by Paulson, direct staff to have the resolution for the repair order on the property located at 410 Fifth Street South, ready for the next city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 29th, 2022, at 8:30. Motion carried. So, on the March 29th meeting, was that a special meeting, Pam? So at that meeting, when we approved the language that there must have been a, a, a work order or whatever we had, Christina Nicola or whomever had drafted it, or Brian, I don't know if it was legally drafted, was that changed from between that meeting and what you're serving him tomorrow?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lindsay, then we might have some more information to Counsel, uh, Counsel Paulson's question, Pam, or city clerk?
And Counsel Paulson, um, the, uh, the approval at that last meeting, and, and I'll take responsibility for these last two weeks, uh, I offered and suggested that I would make the corrections. There were certain corrections to that document, and it did, it, uh, it stalled out with me for these two weeks. So I did make all the necessary corrections and return it, and we collected the signatures, but.
So what were the corrections that were made, and why haven't we seen that document to approve it if it was changed from the original approval on the 29th?
The, uh, the corrections or, uh, the corrections or changes that were made were speci, were specific changes requested by the council to include the two addresses and make it, uh, make sure that it's compliant all the way.
That's what I was trying to remember. So those were added in there, but not given back to us. Do, do we have to approve those, or do we, do we, we have to approve them? So.
Pam?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have some more information for Counsel Paulson?
At the special meeting on the 29th, the resolution was presented, and then with recommended changes, an attorney Lindsay said he would make those recommended changes. So that's what we are waiting for, because the resolution and the order required signatures from both myself and the mayor, so.
So does this council have to see the revised version to approve it?
No. The, the recommended changes were made by the attorney, and that was.
Okay, so that's in full effect enforced as soon as it's served?
Correct. And those minutes were in your packet tonight for approval?
Sorry, I didn't get that far. Um, yeah, I guess, because we're a little ahead of the game here. Um, so, based on that, once, once they get, once the homeowner gets served, 120 days kicks in, and then how, how, uh, at what point do we say, okay, we're going to schedule an inspection, so it's on the 121st day? How, how much time do we have in advance to have to schedule an inspection for, upon completion? Because you give them 120 days, and then you go to have an inspector, that might be another month or so, depending upon the inspection or the schedule of an inspector's time.
Well, they could.
I just, I want to make sure that we're doing this timely, that we're respecting the way that we have outlined the process, and that we've communicated to the Kingsleys and, and what path we were going to take. And then I had specifically asked for the Kingsleys to receive any and all correspondence that were associated with this situation. So I would like to have that. I don't know if I need to make a motion on it, but I would like to see that go forward with correspondence to the Kingsleys.
Excuse me, Mayor? I presented the signed documents to them tonight. Okay, thank you. Okay, so then back to the inspection question.
Uh, but, we'll let you answer that, Brian, but under the property maintenance code, if I remember the, the code information correctly, you'll have to wait till the repairs are all done before they inspect. They can go and inspect the progress anytime they want, but Brian, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and that is the answer. We can inspect during the progress of the, uh, of the corrections. And the other thing that we can do is, we could, we could put a, a calendar tickler about three weeks out, uh, just to make sure that we have plenty of time to arrange for that final inspection on day 1.
And I think that's what I'm looking for. So do I need to make a motion to have that done, or just direct city?
I think we're, I'm doing it right now.
You're doing it right now? Okay, okay. And then just, um, I appreciate that, Pam, that they've been included with that. And then I would just say with any other documentation that would come forward, if they could be included with that as well. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Paulson. Counsel Beyondich?
Thank you. Brian, I just have one question. Does he need to be present to be served these papers?
Um, the, the answer is, is yes, kind of. So, um, they wouldn't need to be personally served, but he's, he's retained an attorney. And so, uh, traditionally, we can just serve the documents on the attorney, and it's effective as to his client.
Okay, I was, I was just hoping that they would get served in a timely manner. Thank you.
And so, um, Ms. Hansak is still, um, listed as a taxpayer, and I believe you served her those papers also. Does the same apply to her?
Correct. Um, the, the, um, both parties and, and the, uh, the mortgage holder will all be served. But, uh, service on the owner will be accomplished through his attorney, I expect, uh, tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, okay.
Counsel Bearbo had a question.
Yeah, my, did you want to finish, anything?
I'll let, I'll hear.
No, you can, you can finish, you can finish.
No, I, I was basically.
Very good. Uh, Counsel Bearbo?
Yeah, one of the things, Mr. Kingsley, that got thrown into this mix that has slowed up this process is the fact that it was going tax forfeit that property, and somebody came in, and I don't know whether it was, uh, uh, Mr. Toman or whoever paid the, uh, tax forfeiture on it, and that slowed up our process, because we were working on it before he did it, and that messed up our timeframe when he paid those, uh, back taxes and stuff to the county. So not to protect him, because I don't want to protect him at all, but just that gets, puts another crink in the, in the action that we can do. We gotta make sure that was all completed properly, get all the paperwork back from the county, something that, before we can do some actions that we need. And I'm not trying to protect him, believe me. But he, he threw a monkey wrench in there, too.
Yep, he's good at that.
Well, we don't want excuses, right? We want results. We want to get your results.
Yep.
And that's the goal and objective here, to get the results that you're looking for, the results that we're getting for, to make sure that the property owner in this particular case and all other properties under these circumstances are held accountable and are brought into compliance under the law, and we have to continue to move forward and, and serve this citizens community by doing this, and so we're getting there, uh, like we should have been there a long time ago, but we're not, so we're getting there. Mr. Kingsley?
I'm good, thank. I, I know you're in an awkward position there, Mr. Bearbo, and so I, I appreciate your support, and, uh.
No, I, I don't have, he's, happens to be my, uh, my wife's, uh,
Yeah.
uh, cousin.
I get that. I'm, I'm sure you're tired of the situation, too, so I appreciate that.
I only have a thing to say good about him, so.
I'll leave, I, I don't want to start that family feud, you go with that.
And I know I have an issue of voting, so there's no monetary value to me out of this whole thing, so.
I understand, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, uh, Beyondich?
Thank you, and just one other quick question on, um, because the rental code is coming up here. Are we any closer to completing that, and how long have we been working on it?
Yeah, we're going to discuss that the next, this next item on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything more from the council? Any more questions from Mr. and Mrs. Kingsley with respect to the property that's adjacent to your residence?
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and, uh, what Counsel Paulson has reiterated, and we all reiterated, that any correspondence that, that comes or any actions taken to keep you, uh, uh, currently updated on, uh, whatever action is being taken, so that's being accomplished by our city minister, so thank you very much. Anything else on, uh, 415, uh, Fifth Street South? Okay, thank you. We'll move to, uh, 7.2, uh, the clinic lease. Uh, do we have any updates on the clinic lease? I know that we have a, a meeting scheduled, I think, uh, with Essentia Health, I think, is it April the 21st?
April 20th, and I'm waiting to get confirmation that, um, leadership is able to attend that meeting, and as soon as we have that, we'll get it posted.
Okay, thank you, and I just want to let everybody know I won't be here on April the 20th, but, so I'm sure that, uh, hopefully you'll have that meeting, and then things will get accomplished in that regard, so thank you.
Britt, is that going to include, uh, counselors on that?
Yes, it's a council, it'd be a special council meeting.
Because I, I was involved with Buderac going through.
At it, Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Yeah. I, I was involved with Mr. Buderac with all the repairs and all that stuff that has to do with that, so I know all about that, what's going on with that clinic, so I want to make sure I'm at that meeting.
Okay, there's a lot to discuss there, so thank you very much. Okay, uh, anything else, any other que, more questions about the clinic lease? Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 7.3 with the, so the rental ordinance, and, uh, once again, we'll refer back to Counsel Beyondich's question. Where are we at, and do you have any other questions about it?
No, I was just looking to see if there were any updates since our last meeting.
I, I think they were looking for, uh, still vetting it out through the, uh, through the, uh, planning and zoning, and I would like to maybe defer to, uh, Mr. Sullivan. Do you have any other information or updates regarding the rental ordinance, uh, the vetting and, and a potential public hearing coming down the road or informational sessions?
Yes, Mayor, the planning commission discussed the, uh, rental ordinance on, uh, at the, uh, meeting in, in, um, April 4th. And we had the AEOA come and talk about how the Section 8 works, inspections work, how all the certification works. This is part of a process I brought to the council some months back that talked about a public relations campaign, public hearings, educational meetings. Um, the goal is not to adopt the rental ordinance until January. That was the directive that was given. So we're, we're ways off. Um, that doesn't prohibit, um, getting back to 7.1 when you, you know, the property at 410 Fifth Street South. Rental code or not, they still have to comply with, you know, the building official and, and the health code and the public, um, the nuisance code, so that's kind of how our attorney is processing it. So the rental code really, I mean, would it help? Maybe, but, you know, this is a, I view this as a separate action from that.
Yeah, if there was a renter in there, it'd be a different story.
I'm working with City Administrator Britt C. Bennis on, um, public hearings, and we're not going to have the public hearings like we usually have them here. We're going to have them at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, and those are going to incl, we have a reach out program, if you recall, with landlords, tenants, um, tenant groups, those kind of things, so we're, we're putting that together now, uh, as staff. So we'll, we'll be outlining that. By the time we have our next meeting, we'll, we'll know exactly when those hearings will be. Thank you.
Yeah, and part of that would be, John, would be the crime-free housing training and all that kind of stuff. We're going to incorporate that as well, so thank you very much for the update. Does that answer your question, Counsel Beyondich? Okay, very good. Anything else, uh, related to item 7.3, the rental code ordinance? All right, thank you. We'll move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is adopt a resolution in order to re, the removal of a hazardous building at 507 11th Street South, and do we have any updates from that?
Yes, um, the hazardous building that we're referencing, it is a garage that has one wall standing. The fire occurred in April. The owner has not had it removed. We are very nervous that that one wall that is standing is going to fall very soon here. So we want to have, pass the resolution so we can serve the owner with that same notice that you need to get that wall down immediately, and if you don't get it down, we're coming to take it down, and we're going to especially assess it to your property.
Okay, thank you. Looking for council action? We'll move. Moved by Counsel Freely, is there support? Support by Counsel Johnson to adopt this resolution to order in the removal of hazardous building at 507 11th Street South. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 8.2 is set a special meeting for the Local Board of Equalization for Thursday, May 5th, 2022, at 9:00 AM. Uh, so if everybody, please look at their calendars, if they're available. I think Counsel Johnson is, is trained, uh, I am trained in, in that as well, uh, so if, um, uh, if it's amenable to those who, uh, will be attending, is May 5th, 2022, at 9:00 AM amenable?
We'll move May 5th.
Okay, pardon?
I will move May 5th, Cinco de Mayo.
Okay, uh, yeah, Counsel Johnson moves Cinco de Mayo, May 5th, 2022, at 9 o'clock for the Board of Equalization. Is there support?
Support, muy bien.
Support, support, muy bien, by, uh, Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Gracias. No, uh, Counsel, uh, Bearbo?
This is going to be live this time in city council chambers, or where? See?
See.
Okay, that's all I want to know. So it isn't going to be on Zoom, right? Because I want, I want this letter sent out to the, to the, to St. Louis County, that we want it live.
So it has been moved in support. Is there any further discussion? Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the county, uh, Sarah Teeny from the county called the other day, and it will be in person. They will all be here. It will not be via Zoom. You're welcome.
Well, thank you. So it has been moved and supported to set this, uh, uh, date, uh, May 5th, uh, 2022, at 09:00 for the Board of Equalization. Is there any further discussion? Pardon? Okay. Okay, thank you, uh, Counsel Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on April 5th, 2022, will turn this portion of the city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. At the April 5th, 2022, Committee of the Whole Meeting, I get an appearance from Matt Reed from SCH regarding the phosphorus. from SCH regarding the phosphorus improvements that were mandated by the state of Minnesota at the wastewater treatment plant. Construction is planned to begin sometime this summer. It was moved and supported to approve the request for authorization to advertise for bids for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus upgrade project.
So moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Discussion was held regarding the water line at, on Third Street South, which is in the roadway and is causing numerous problems this year. It was moved and supported to direct staff to meet with Virginia Public Utilities to determine the cost from implementing a water line loop, I'm sorry, on Third Street North, not Third Street South, Third Street North, and to discuss the request for the city portion of the costs to present back to the city council for review.
So moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Paulson for discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
This is a little off topic and I apologize, Mayor, but we had a resident here, Mr. Etter, that was here earlier and this isn't necessarily Third Street North, but it's close to that area. And there was the issue that our city, we had given a directive that our city staff, based upon availability, would be able to remove the snow near Alice Nettle and that we would be billing Alice Nettle for the equipment and the time that it took our staff to do that. Apparently that was not done. Maybe there wasn't time, but I did go by there last week. The fence is now leaning and there is a pile of pretty much debris that's now melting in the lake. And Mr. Etter was questioning why that did not get done and I don't mean to bring this into the conversation when we're voting on Third Street North, but if we could just give him an answer on that and satisfy him on that, I'd appreciate it.
And I think if I recall this conversation, not to belabor it any further, but seeing we're surrounded that topic of discussion, I believe that Dana Halton, the, the director of the HRA, was going to contact the contractor that was there, if I remember the conversation, and was going to have that individual remove what snow they could without damaging the fence and any damage that was resulting, as a result of the snow being dumped over that fence would be the responsibility repair of that contractor. Is that correct? All right, very good, thank you.
If we could follow up with that, the fence is actually leaning and there is debris that is melting into the lake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So getting back to the directing staff, the, no, it's fine, that's, okay, it's moved and supported in that regard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? I'm sorry. Okay, direct, yeah, it was, the motion was to direct staff to meet with the V, V Virginia Public Utilities to determine the cost of implementing a water line loop at Third Street North and discuss the request for the city portion of the cost and present it to the council for review. Was a motion and a support to direct staff to do that and I know we're at the discussion phase of that. Do you have further discussion, Counselor Baraboo?
We just have some discussion now. The next Public Utilities official meeting is not until the 26th of, or 25th of this month, so you're probably not getting any action on that until then.
We met with them yesterday, actually.
Yeah, we met with them already.
That is planned and we're going to bring it back to the council.
Okay, before, before their meeting and approval?
We're waiting for some estimates. We revised the plan and we're coming back.
Okay, okay, that's fine then.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Paul Mo from People's Service, who is responsible for the repair and the maintenance and the operation of a wastewater treatment plant, presented information on the request for the purchase of ferric chloride for the wastewater treatment plant. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for purchase of ferric chloride in the amount of $874 per dry ton for 2022 and 2023 from Hawkins Incorporated.
So moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Paul Mo also gave a synopsis on the fine screen gearboxes. He had received quotes to pull fine screen number three, replace the brush. Another quote was received to pull, replace the gearboxes for all three of them in the amount of $29,585. After discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the purchase of a gearbox and required removal and installation for all three gearboxes and that motion failed due to a lack of a second. It was then moved and supported to direct staff to present cost information as an ad alternate for fine screen repair and gearbox with a breakdown for review at the council meeting on Tuesday, April 12, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
I will make that motion, but is it, I don't remember seeing it.
We haven't got it back yet from Paul.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we review it at the next Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Moved by Counselor Johnson to review this at the next Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baraboo?
So are we seeing this both directions for all three and a single one or what are we doing with this?
Creating, we're making, creating a quote that's got an alternate to do that.
Okay. Because I think it's absolutely stupid and foolish to not do all three at once because they have the equipment there already.
Correct.
Why pay, it's like when we hold equipment for street projects and we hold them over and keep them here so you don't have any up costs again to bring the equipment and stuff in because there's a cost of that. So, okay, we'll wait till see what the prices are.
Okay. Any further discussion?
All three at once, we have one mobilization cost. If we do them separate, we'll have two mobilization costs and they're expensive when you look back at them. That's why I think we need to do all three at once. But that's my personal opinion from working with all the street projects all these years.
Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. So there are two quotes in your packet, one to do the single repair and one to do the three. So the one single repair would cost $30,811.27 and the three repair gearboxes would be $45,801.27. What's that?
Are we getting one free then or is it just three times the cost?
Crane. Well, yes, the crane is.
Another $15,000 more.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, from $30,811.27 for the single, $45,801.27 for all three. Yeah, and times two is $90,000, right? Pam? But there's a motion on the floor and a second to move it for review. So is there any further discussion?
Can I just?
Counselor Freely?
Real quickly, I remember Paul Mo telling us that in order to do the maintenance on this, it required torching to remove the apparatus, the mounting apparatus, and I would suggest that there should be some fabrication done to allow that to be removed without having to cut it off next time, but possibly remove it in some fashion. I don't know, I don't know enough about mechanics, but I remember hearing that and it seemed strange to me that you would have to torch out an apparatus as opposed to just wrench it out or unscrew it, so.
That's, that's what he's going to fix, isn't it? They're going to put a new, new bracket on it, saying just pull it over the crane the next time. They don't have to redo it.
Yeah, we talked about this at the last Committee of the Whole Meeting and the goal and the objective was, his suggestion was, his recommendation was to do all three of them, pull them all out, inspect them to see, make sure that they're all doing well and then reposition them and so they don't, don't have to take them, they don't have to crawl down there and, and work on them. They'll be able to take, lift them up without having to use a crane the next time. So all that's inclusive in this, in this bid process, right? So, but not, the motion isn't to take action at this council meeting, so. Motion is to move it for review. So the motion on the floor is to move it for review. So is there any further discussion?
I've got one more, Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Baraboo?
If we have a fixed cost already on this for, for this, do we get a bid on it from them? We did, didn't we? Why do we have to refer it any further than here tonight and prove that it doesn't make sense? We're going to have the same prices anyway.
That's what the mayor's trying to say.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought you were trying to say, Mayor.
Well, I'm saying that, but there's a motion on the floor not to take the action. The motion on the floor is to move it, so that's the motion right now. So is there any further, let's read the motion back, please, Pam?
By Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Paulson, to move to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for further review.
That is correct. So there's further discussion, Counselor Johnson?
I guess my, my confusion is, I, I, you know, we read, I read these, so the first quote B is to pull all the screens and gearbox and quote A, which is second, is just to pull one. It's, it reads very confusing because this says pull A, number three screen. So quote B is actually the idea of doing everything all at once, one time. Is that, all right, then I guess I would, now that that clarification has happened, I would remove my motion.
Okay, thank you. Well, Counselor Johnson rescinds his motion to move it to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. The person who made the second was Counselor Paulson. Would you like to rescind that, your second of that motion?
Sure.
Thank you very much. So, thank you. Now that we have a clarification, we're all on the same page, so looking for council action in this regard.
Please, excuse me, I have his light on.
Counselor Johnson?
I will move that we accept fine green, fine screen quote B, pull all screens and repair gearbox for $45,801.27.
Yeah, that's a motion by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Yeah, support by Counselor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I'm sorry, do you have some more for discussion, Counselor Beyondich? Okay, I'm sorry. More second, more discussion, Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. Sherry, in the budget is that $45,000, it's from the sewer fund, so we're okay with that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't see it, like, come on, I tried to glance this when I can. So, so the motion is, we did vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. My next item on the agenda was the approval of a three-year contract for fireworks for 2022 with J and M displays for the Fourth of July and Festival of Trees. It'll be 20 for 2022, 2023, and 2024. So to approve.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve with support from Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the request from the Savvy Symphony Orchestra for inclusion of $5,000 in the 2023 budget.
So moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by?
All support, Mayor.
Counselor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to set a special meeting regarding the lease contract for the Golf Course Restaurant with the potential to close the meeting for real estate negotiations. Meeting has been set, Pam, for?
Yes, for Monday, April 18 at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you.
It was also moved to defer any further discussion on the Golf Course Restaurant lease until a special meeting has been set.
Yeah.
It was moved and supported to approve the addition of a fee for rental of the premium table skirting, which are the round table class at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center at $10 per table, and this is strictly due to the cost of cleaning them.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, sorry, I was just adding that to my calendar, Pam. So I just, for clarification for the general public, we've had several discussions at the design team level for the Intramotor Center that brought it back forward to the council, that discussed it at the Committee of the Whole Level, I believe it was at the Committee of Whole Level. And we do, the city does own the round tables. We actually also own the round linens that go on the round tables. The problem is that there is no laundering service in order to either rent those or get those cleaned and facilitated, so we're using a local dry cleaner in, in here in Virginia and those costs after COVID have gone up significantly. So unfortunately, we do have to pass those costs on to the, the end result, which is you, the consumer. But we did do a lot of research with other entities regarding Lefty's tent rental, driving to Duluth or driving to Grand Rapids. Those actually, those linens were quite a bit higher from $12.50 on up to $20 per linen, depending upon the diameter of the, of the tablecloth itself. So just wanted to give a quick clarification on why the price is increasing and it's unfortunate, but it's just the costs that are going up that we have to pass forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
It was moved and supported to allow staff to draft a proposal regarding future rental fee increases related to cost increases.
So moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Is there support? Is there support?
What's the question again?
I missed what.
Motion, okay.
I didn't see that on my agenda.
Yep.
What is it on the agenda?
You have it numbered in the minutes.
What's that?
Yeah, you have it numbered in the minutes. Allow staff to draft a proposal regarding future rental fee increases related to cost increases. It's on page 59, letter J.
Mine's different. Letter J. I got a hearing impaired sign.
It's, it's, it was accidentally omitted from the regular agenda item, but Britt is referring it out of, out of the minutes of the meeting. So the minutes of the meeting says that, but it's not reflected in the, in the agenda this evening, so that was inadvertently omitted. So that's where we're at right now. So she's reading from the minutes. It did come from the Committee of the Whole Meeting, so Counselor Johnson had made that motion at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, is now making that motion again to set, would you please repeat the motion?
Thank you.
And then we're looking for a second from that motion.
Allow staff to draft a proposal regarding future rental fee increases related to cost increases.
Okay, so it's been moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli, is there any further discussion?
So what does that mean exactly? That motion doesn't mean much to me.
Well, it means, what it means is that.
They do an upgrade to us and show us before they implement the upgrades to the fees? Is that correct?
Right.
Is that the way it's supposed to be?
Right.
Which it should be.
That's, that's correct, yes. Council Johnson.
The idea was like we did with the HRE, with cable commission. When cable raises fees, they don't need to come to us, they raise it by the percentage that cable's raised. So if we're, if we're getting a service and they raise the fee of the service, which would impact our ability to provide that service in an economical manner, then staff have the ability just to raise it by the same percentage or the amount so that they're not coming back, literally could be every month because there's a surcharge or they've increased their, the vendor has increased, the unit, you know, Coke has to go up a quarter or Pepsi, Coke, we're in that building, Coke. So it allows a streamlining of the staff being able to manage the finances without having to come back here when it comes to things that we have no control over.
This is just to create the proposal.
And this is just to create that proposal, yes.
Thoughts, what the staff have.
It still comes back to us.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Britt.
Yeah, and so further, is there, was there a second? Yeah, it was. So further discussion in that regard, for me, is that staff has to have the ability to make incremental adjustments when necessary in order to accomplish that, but with the selected body, all of us need to be aware of when they make those increases. So whenever that proposal comes back, as we vet it out and give staff that authority to do so, moving forward, the kind of, so I would like to see there was that we would actually be notified when there's going to be a cost increase so we know. So, all right, thank you. So it's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
It was moved and supported to remove the hearing impaired sign at 911-13th Street North.
Moved.
Moved by Council Freely, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was removed, it was, we had a motion to approve the request for the handicap parking sign at 911-13th Street North. The motion did fail at the committee of the whole.
Thank you.
It was, discussion was held regarding the ASME, regarding the ASME Review Committee for 2022. They had received three requests this year, and the committee is required to have three management and three members of the union sit on the panel. After discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the 4% stipend of the base wage for the construction codes inspector.
So moved.
Moved by Council Johnson, is there support? Support by Council Freely for discussion. This is as a result of the getting the license to be the code official, right? Right, that was an additional step up as getting the full code inspector licensing. So Council Freely for further discussion.
Did the city pay for the schooling necessary to be accomplished?
Portions of it, the continuing education, yes.
Okay. And Sherry, what's the cost analysis on, what's the increase? What's the cost of the budget for that compared to the cost that we put into it to provide the certification?
Well, even if it's a dollar an hour or more, it's 20, 80 hours in an annual year, so you're talking $2,080. But I would have to go back to my notes, which I don't have from the committee, when we discuss that.
And so we are anticipating the city would recoup the costs by the code enforcement that she's now able to accomplish.
The plan review fee that is charged on every single building permit that's over a certain dollar amount is directly related to that department.
So we will be recouped?
We will be recouped.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Freely.
Mayor.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Council Bearable.
One thing we've done, Gary, over history of this city, anytime an individual goes to get a job grade for the performance of their job, we have all those costs in our training budgets and stuff in sessions. They also get some money if they do stuff on their own, but that's separate. If it's to upgrade their job that we require for her to continue in that position with more money, we've always approved that for all the years I've been on this council. It's outside of it because they want to just do it. But if we require them to be moving into this, which we basically did in this case because we need the extra funds out of the charges that we use and couldn't do without her upgrade, that's where we've been in the past. Okay, so I have no problem with.
It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve setting the wage for the library clerk acquisitions at 2840.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson, is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Council Bearable, is there any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you. I'm not sure if someone can refresh my memory. Is this going forward as an MOU?
Yes, they each get their own MOU. Their changed, their changed job description gets attached to it. They have to sign the job description, accepting any duties we changed and anything we did in there.
So this is being executed as an MOU going forward? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Paulson. So has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to designate Council Freely, Paulson, and Johnson to the interview committees for the event coordinator and sales and marketing positions.
This moot?
Yes, no, yes.
Do we need, really need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion on that anymore, but thank you.
Thanks for the update.
The next item, approve the 2022 Fleece Week event to be held at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center parking lot on May 12th, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Moved.
Moved by Council Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution for the purchase agreement for the property at 101-8.5 South.
So moved.
Moved by Council Johnson and supported by? Council Barnzelli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution for the purchase agreement at 101-9-8.5 South.
Moved.
Moved by Council Johnson and supported by? Council Freely, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution for the purchase of the property at 111-10th Street South.
So moved.
Moved by Council Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Bearable, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
No further items from that meeting.
Thank you, Britt. Move to item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Does any city council have a Commission Liaison Report that they give this evening? Council Beyondich.
Thank you. I just would like to remind the public that the book sale will be happening at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center on April 27, 28, 29, and 30. And could you remind me when people can make their donations? Didn't have that part written down.
Jody, our library director, welcome to the council meeting once again. You are diligent in coming to each one of those, so thank you and welcome again this evening.
Thank you. So you can do drop off tomorrow, which is, yes, tomorrow, Wednesday, from 10 to 2, and it is door nine.
Door nine.
Door nine.
From 10 a.m. to 2 p.m.
Yep, and then on Thursday, it is going to be from 3 to 6. Not sure if it's going to be door nine or the other door, but we do have people who have volunteered to direct you in the right direction, so. And then that will be the last day for donations, and then the sale starts the 27th. If you want an early in, you just need to join in the friends, and you can go in on Tuesday night, so.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Beyondich. Anything further? Okay, thank you. Okay, move to item 11, Department Head Reports. We'll go around, Council Bearable.
Just one more, Commission Liaison Report. I remember we had a two-week hiatus from the last time because it was the day, it was the day after.
Okay, Council Bearable, Liaison Report.
It's not going to be really a liaison, we've already received the Public Utilities Minutes, so it's all in there, just read it, it came to our email, so.
Okay.
So I'm not going to give a report today, it's all in there.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
In the email.
Okay, very good, thank you, I'll refer to that. Council Johnson, do you have any Department Head Reports?
No, I just wanted to comment that my children got free book coupons through the school. That's an amazing marketing technique. Good for you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Johnson. So we'll go around the room for Department Head Reports. Britt, anything? Brian, our city attorney, any report to be given as from legal?
No additional reports, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. Anything from you, John? Thank you. Sherry? Pam? Just a reminder, we do have the Board of Equalization Schedule 4, May 5th, 9 a.m. And there has been some people have called me asking about this, and I've referred them to you, hopefully you've got those calls, not yet, but you will, I'm sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to item 12, which is the council reports. Does any council need, like, Council Bearable?
I'm busy tonight.
Okay, we'll go with your council report, and then over to Council Johnson.
I just want to give a heads up to this council, there's going to be individuals and stuff coming from the Iron Trail Motors Show and stuff that was there. There's been a tremendous amount of complaints about the temperature in that building, and they've been checking with the manufacturers, that floor in there, and you can keep the temperature at 70 degrees and that floor does not melt underneath. And it was at 55 degrees in that building for people to be looking and watching it, and the vendors were freezing that were in there. You just need to wear good things on your feet, but they're cold up above. So they're going to be coming to this council sometime down the road to complain about that because they're afraid they're going to lose vendors next year.
And just to follow up on that, Council Bearable did meet with the one of the representatives from the Homeboat and Travel Show and did refer them to Jim Hunt, and had to have some conversations with Jim about that, and they're going to be working with the scheduling with respect to the ice show and those kind of things and try to make modifications, so maybe they will have to ice in next year. But regardless of that, if that's the case, they're going to make the reasonable combinations to ensure that that doesn't happen again next year, so I think our staff is on it. Yeah, thank you. Hey, Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to really give a big shout out to the Iron Trail Motors Event staff. All of them have been working diligently, literally around the clock since Sunday for this week of events. We've got a national trade show, a national private rental of a concert on Friday, and they have been just doing amazing work out there. So if you see one of the staff or you happen to be able to get back in the building next week for walking, really thank them. It's events like this week where unfortunately the walking track is closed, but it's because of events like that 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 walking path can continue to be open and free to the public most of the year. So great job to Brian and Jim and everybody else who's been over there in the last, last week, working constantly. Thank you.
Yeah, this is one of the biggest trade shows, the SME Conference, Mining Conference, which was normally held at the Decadul, it's now being held here. It's a big coup for us, and so we hope that we're going to be providing with all the services and the amenities that they're going to need to make this successful event. And I did happen to go over there and talk to some of the vendors, not for that purpose, for another purpose, and they're very pleased with the service that they're getting from the staff. They think it's a very nice environment. I spoke to a representative, somebody who's from Argentina, and then a group of people that were from Montreal, so they're very pleased with the event so far and the services they're getting from our staff, so thank you for that, so. Council Freely.
Just real quickly, Brian Silber indicated to us earlier this evening that he spoke with members of the Board of Directors of SME, and they've indicated an interest in having to hold their conference in the Virginia Iron Trail Motors Event Center annually.
Yeah, that's a great thing, and I did, yeah, thank you for that. I got the same information as well. Thank you, Council Freely, so that's exciting news. Okay, I have a couple items that I'd like to bring about. First of all, it relates to the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I know maybe any of the council members and some of our staff have been receiving a significant amount of questions, concerns, complaints about the benches and the seating at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I hear you loud and clear. I know I've received a lot of calls with respect to that. I don't know what can be done. We're looking at to see what, how we can alleviate or what can be done in order to accomplish that. It's going to take some time in which to do so, so please have some patience as we try to gravitate and try to find some solutions and some adaptations to that seating environment there. So thank you for all your questions and comments about that. And then I'd like to make an announcement that Molly Fraboni, Molly Fraboni's husband, Ray, was a firefighter for the city of Virginia for many, many years, and Molly turns 100 years old, and I think it's on the 15th of this month. And there's a big, huge, open house celebration for her coming up at the Servicemen's Club. And I bring this to your attention because Molly was a strong advocate for the community. She did a lot of volunteer work in the community, primarily volunteering, cleaning tables, cleaning the, all the things at the American Legion Club, cleaning after all of us, you know, and people, and so just wanted to give an announcement, a shout out to Molly Fraboni's family, will be coming up from the metro area. Alex Kettle, I think, and Sue Fraboni will be coming up, and they'll be holding out a little event there. He sent me an email and asked if I would make this announcement. I said certainly, 100 years old, what a great accomplishment, and what a great lady and a great community service person. I mean, we have all kinds of people that serve our community, but here's one who's 100 years old and continues to thrive in this community and call this Virginia her home, so we thank you, congratulations, happy birthday, Mary. So Molly, thank you very much.
Is this an event or open house?
Well, it's an open house. If you know Molly Fraboni, be time to come in and say hi to her or family, I'm certainly going to be there.
At the Servicemen's Club?
It's at the Servicemen's Club, it's from 1:30 to 3:00, cake and coffee there, and come and give your congratulations and the milestone of turning 100 years old. So thank you very much, everybody. Anything else to come before the council this evening?
Mayor?
Yes, Council Barnzelli.
I've got a thing that's been bothering me. It's the item K on the back. It says, approve the request for a handicap parking sign. Well, is it, do they, what if it's on the other side of the street?
We didn't approve that.
We didn't approve it.
You approved it?
We did not.
Did not, oh.
There was a motion at the committee of the whole meeting.